All the selectmen are all present. We'll stop by transmitting a Treasury warrant nineteen, nineteen A, twenty, and twenty-eight.
Move the warrants agreed by the chairman?
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Anamis? Approval of meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten?
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Our seven o'clock appointment?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, there has been a conflict. Mr. Gleason, who is representing Verizon, New England, is also scheduled to be in Linfield, and is probably, may very well be on his way here. And he's asked if it would be possible, unless there are butters present to object, if it would be possible for the board to consider tabling action on this matter until later in the meeting.
Are there any butters here? Have any questions?
No objection.
Is the movement?
I would recommend that there be a motion to table to a time later on in this meeting.
I'd like to make the motion that we table the scheduled at seven o'clock meeting with Billson Gleason of Verizon to a point later in this evening to accommodate his arrival.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Any questions, all in favor?
Upstayed.
Unanimous? I'm sorry. Four-four, one upstayed. Okay, we'll go right to our seven oh-five appointment with Frank and Karen West, and they will come here to talk about Toys for Tots program.
Hi, good evening, gentlemen. This obviously is not Karen West. This is actually Art, gentlemen, Art Enos. He's the Marine Corps Coordinator for the area for the Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program. And basically, what we'd like to do is just briefly, I would like to tell you a little bit about the Toys for Tots program, and then I'd like to tell you about a few things that are going on within our town with things that we're doing within the town. So with that, and certainly, we're available for any questions that you may have for either...
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, sir.
As Frank said, my name is Art Enos. I'm the coordinator for Middlesex Essex County from Marine Corps out of Devon's Contact Ordinance Unit. I'm here tonight really to kind of thank the town of Wilmington for its continued support. Wilmington's always been right up front with any of the towns around here in terms of the donations to the Toys for Tots program. Each year for the past two or three years, we've seen the need totally increase. I think this year, we're looking at about a twenty percent increase in the need that's coming to us. As a result of the program that runs in this area, we actually have more people coming to this area. There are people in the local towns that probably felt they shouldn't come to Toys for Tots for whatever internal reasons they had. They felt it belonged to other towns or other areas that needed it more. But we're now seeing people come forward from towns like Wilmington or Burlington or whatever because they do have the need that these other people have. Thanks to the efforts of people like Frank and Karen West, West Realty, they've done a tremendous job in your town of promoting Toys for Tots and of allowing us to get the number of toys that we do out of your particular area. So we're in awe of what you do up here. Every year, it seems like I see more and more toys coming out of the Wilmington area. Don't know how you do it because other towns have a hard time, but they do a tremendous job in Wilmington, and we're certainly appreciative of it. I'd like to, if I could, present the town of Wilmington with a Commander's Award for the year two thousand and ten. My guest is the chairman, you get to...
I...
How you do, sir?
Thank you.
This is the United States Marine Corps Reserve Commander's Award. Proud to recognize the town of Wilmington for its outstanding support of the two thousand and ten Marine Toys for Tots program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring the joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. I'm pleased to present that to you, sir.
Very good.
Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
I'd also like to present a little certificate to... A fella here plays a pretty important role in the program you have here, Mr. Raymond LaFleur. How are you, sir? Nice to see you.
Thank you.
This is a certificate of appreciation, presenting gratitude to Raymond LaFleur for upstanding support for our United States Marine Corps Reserve Toys for Tots program. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Basically, gentlemen, I'll be brief. First, I'd like to thank the town manager, Mike Ayer, for allowing, once again, allowing a Toys for Tots box here at Town Hall. We have them at various schools, different town buildings, the senior center, as well as Demi Way now has a box as well. A lot of the local businesses have been able to, have been very accommodating. So if you see, basically, you'll be seeing boxes around town if you're not already seeing them. I know it's not past Thanksgiving yet, but we're trying to get the word out now, and you can see that that's got the Marine Corps uniform as well as Santa Claus. Right now, we have an event scheduled at our office, which is three eighty-six Main Street in Wilmington, and it's our annual Toys for Tots Santa Day, your Photo with Santa Day, where for the price of either a toy or a modest donation, kids can have their pictures taken with Santa Claus. And all we do is that we give you a CD full of photos. And turns out to be kind of a nice holiday party. We'll have holiday music there as well as some snacks, and certainly, members of the Board of Selectmen are more than welcome. I know one of them will be in attendance, I hope. We're also looking to have several other events. As you know, we've had several of the Bruins there, we've had professional wrestlers, and we've actually been working to finalize a few other events. So just basically, we'd like to, you know, be putting some posters around town and some press releases, and certainly contacting the local press. And we appreciate their generosity as well as far as allowing different press releases for the different events. But most importantly, I'd like to thank the residents of the community in the area because, you know, people like Art and I, we put out empty boxes, and somehow, it's a miracle every year that somehow they get filled. They get filled overwhelmingly, and especially the last couple of years, you know, I mean, we all know that the economy's tough, so, you know, anything else. And, you know, the other thing, too, is I'd just like to say whether you're donating to the Toys for Tots program or any other charity, you know, just the spirit of giving and the spirit of volunteerism in this town is tremendous. And, you know, the thing that I'd just like to say is that, you know, thanks to the town for all they do, be it the sponsorship of Toys for Tots or whatever. But, you know, hey, if we make the holidays a little bit nicer, a little bit warmer for some of the residents, we'd like to be able to do that. And the other thing I'll just close with, that is if anyone's in need of toys, which is certainly the reason for the program, if they go into the website, which is toysfor tots.org, there's a listing, and it's very easy to actually get toys. So I know that, you know, the Marines would love to give out, that's what they're in business for this time of year, you know, this part of the year, that's what they're in business for. So if anyone needs toys, certainly, you know, feel free to, you know, look through the website. If anyone has any questions, my name and phone number, my home phone number's on all the boxes. Certainly call my wife, myself. You don't have to leave a name, just, you know, if you want to, you have an anonymous question, which the nice thing about this program is it's anonymous. So it's not like, you know, people in town, you know, knowing your business or whatever. So, you know, basically, you know, people that are struggling to make ends meet, you know, this is a way to help them out a little bit. So with that, I'll take any questions or leave you guys to more important matters.
Thank you for your time, Corporal Frank, and it obviously is a very important matter this time of year. And I know you help a lot of local families and even some guys serving overseas, and we've helped out in the past through your program. So I appreciate it, and I appreciate all you do for the Marine Corps and your service, sir. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just like to say, you do put, you know, a lot of time into it, both as the organization and knowing any Frank, but a lot of the other Toys for Tots that, you know, go around collecting toys for other agencies. But like you say, Wilmington, the community seems to always come through. I've witnessed it, and in fact, I couldn't believe, you know, years passed of how many pods that you, we filled up and shipped out, and it's all because everybody makes it accessible through the community and each and every individual coming forward and helping whoever needs help. And I'd like to thank all, all the people, the community, all the people that come out and sponsor it, and all the people that put their time. And it's, that's what, for me, I'm a big kid, Christmas is, that's what it's about.
It's a... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. It's unfortunate that there is, that there are any kids that need this kind of a service, but it's at this time of year when this organization and other organizations really get to show the spirit. And you've mentioned the giving nature of Wilmington, the volunteerism of the people of this community. So, you know, in a strange, unfortunate way, it's a beautiful thing to see the generosity that folks bring forth. And Frank, I want to thank you very much for really spearheading this initiative. I mean, we've got certificates and lots of other good things going on, but you gentlemen really do the hard work and continue to bring this to our attention each year, so thank you for that. This is, Toys for Tots, we see and hear about it a lot at the holidays, but it's year-round. Am I wrong or right?
Basically, I start Toys for Tots somewhere in July, and I finish it up in February. So when people think it's only a one or two month, it isn't. When I hooked on, they told me it was one month, but it's turned into about a seven or eight month ordeal. And there's a lot of preparation, a lot of organization that goes in. The only thing I'd add to what Frank had said about the people going to the website, the reason we went to a website listing for these people is to keep it more confidential so that people in the town, neighbors and so forth, don't have to know. You register with us on a secure site. We notify you by email where to go to get your toys and so forth. And we particularly do not always line it up in the town that you live in for your distribution, primarily for that reason. I know some people sometimes think, why did I have to go to the next town over to get my toys? But we've just found that sometimes the people who really need it are somewhat embarrassed to come out when they have to go in their own area. So if you hear of any of your people that maybe went to another town to get their toys, that's kind of the reason we do it.
Thank you.
Good, sir.
It's all been said and...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Yes, same here. It's all been said and said well, but just personally, thank you for the time that you put into this project. It's just yet another example on how people make a difference that has nothing to do with government other than, you know, using this forum to make sure that people have the information that's available. So thank you both, and to everybody you work with, and to the residents who participate. Thanks.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add that as even, it's been a learning experience for me as far as the effort the army put in, as far as like the young Marines that come in for that day, but I also ask them questions as I'm there. And, you know, the work and effort that goes beyond that, as far as the military itself, they go to the warehouses, they separate the toys, they put the distribution through the network, and all the planning and the stages of it, it's unbelievable, Toys for Tots, how much is involved to really make this thing really work and successful and throughout the family. So it's been a learning experience for me, and I've been there, I don't know how many years, but every year I keep coming out with more and more knowledge of really the effort and the workmanship. And I think to all the people in the service for the effort that they put in, a special thanks from the Board of Selectmen from Wilmington to us, to you.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas.
Same to you, sir.
Thank you.
Ho, ho, ho.
Thank you very much, and happy Thanksgiving, gentlemen. Get on and blow your cover, Ray. Okay, we'll go right now to our seven-ten appointment with Daniel J. Walls, two-eleven Lowell Street Corporation, doing business as East Gate Liquors. Request to change manager from Johnny Lucci to Daniel J. Walls. Hey, Dan, come on. Good evening.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Close yours.
Just requesting to be the manager of East Gate Liquors, which I obviously have been running for over thirty years, and with the passing of Mr. Lucci, we thought it would be time to put my name on the license.
So you have some experience in this business?
I think so.
Okay, any recommendations from the police chief?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The police department has reviewed the application of two-eleven Lowell Street Corporation Doing Business as East Gate Liquors relative to the change of manager from Johnny Lucci to Daniel J. Walls. The police department has conducted a review of Mr. Walls and recommends approval of this license request. It's signed by Chief Begones.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
I'd just like to make a quick comment, just real quick. I've known Danny a long time, and unfortunately, what happened to John Senior, and I think many of us young kids at the time either worked at Market Basket or Lucci's as one of those individuals that worked at Lucci's supermarket. And I remember working with Danny many, many years ago, and I know Danny's an outstanding guy, and I know he'll do well because he's been in that position a long time. I think people realize that, and I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Any other comments or a motion?
I'd like to just follow it up. I know Danny and your family for years, went to school with your brother Billy, yourself and I think Gene.
Yeah.
And you've been, you know, fine, fine family, and also relating back to the business, I can remember you were there for years and years, and as far as I can remember, you've always ran that very efficient, did an outstanding job as far as with the community, and, you know, I wish you a lot of luck there still.
Thank you.
Motion to move to grant the request.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Continue.
Thank you.
Joe's not here yet. Okay, our seven fifteen is with Humphrey Skip Moynihan, Principal Assessor, public hearing for discussion of local property tax policy with reference to classification.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Board of Assessors has completed its work on the two thousand and eleven valuation file, and I'd like to share our findings with you. What I would like to do first is just show you where we were last year at this time. This is a comparison of the fiscal two thousand and nine town value to the fiscal two thousand and ten town value. And you will note now fiscal two thousand and ten was a revaluation year, and when we analyzed the sales of properties that were occurring versus the assessed values that we had on the property, you'll recall that last year, we were writing down the value as quickly as we could, to the tune of almost two-hundred-and-eight million dollars last year. So we had reduced the residential value by six percent, the commercial, industrial, and personal property by three to four percent. And if you'll recall, the year prior to that, we had reduced the residential value another six percent. So we were seeing a trend occurring during those periods. I'm happy to report, and I think this is the news of the day, that this is what the town of Wilmington looks like today as it compares to last year. And you can see we're now moving into the black, all right? All the minuses have been erased. We've actually added thirteen million dollars to the residential class. This past year alone, we've built twenty-six new homes in Wilmington. We're starting to move back into the black on the commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors. So this year, and this is obviously, it seems to me to be a dramatic trend from the past two years, where we are writing down value. It looks to me like, at least for the time being, the bleeding has stopped, all right, and that we're moving into the positive column again. And I think that's a good sign. So how this plays out in terms of the tax levy that we're proposing for this year, we're proposing a tax levy of fifty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-four, which is the maximum tax levy allowed under proposition two and a half, and it's consistent with what we've done in the past years. You'll note that the share of the levy is going to remain the same. The residential sector will bear fifty-five percent of the tax levy, and the commercial, industrial, and personal property sectors will bear forty-five percent of the tax levy. And so when we get to a point where we're going to set the tax rate itself, we take the proposed tax levy of fifty-six million, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, and we divide it by the current town value, and the town of Wilmington today is valued at three billion, five-hundred-and-twenty-four million, five-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars, And from that, we come up with an overall or a straight rate of sixteen dollars and six cents for a thousand. If we were not a classified community, this would in fact be our tax rate. But Wilmington is a classified community, and by that I mean we shift the tax burden more on the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. And the Board of Assessors is this year recommending to you adoption of a minimum residential factor of point seven-four-zero-zero-one-five, which results in the maximum shift possible of one-point-seven-five. And this is consistent with what we've been doing in the past few years. This will result in a tax rate on the residential end of eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand, and on the commercial, industrial, and personal property end of twenty-eight dollars and ten cents per thousand. And as you can see, we're, if you look at this column, for example, in fiscal year oh-two, the residential share of the tax levy was fifty-two percent. The commercial, industrial, and personal property was forty-eight percent. The CIP share of the levy has been going down while the residential share of the levies continue to increase due to the expansion in the value of the housing market in eastern Massachusetts. It reached a high point in oh-eight, and now we've started to turn it around, and we're trying to get the residential share of the levy back to a manageable position. In the past four years, we've shifted the maximum amount we could. This results in the best tax break for the residential homeowner in town. So our recommendation would be to continue on the path that we set to give the best value to the residential homeowner. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to thank you and your office for all the hard work you do year-round in getting to us this point here tonight. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Skip, I'll ask a question that I'm, if I look back, I'd probably ask it every time you've been in front of us. From my perspective, the tax levy is driven in large part by the valuation, and the shift is in large part driven by the valuation. Right. And I always ask for a refresher for myself and for anybody who might be watching, an explanation as to the valuation process. Can you just go into a little bit on how both CIP and residential properties are valued? What sales data are you using? What's the timeframe attributable to this period of valuation, et cetera?
Sure. The system that we have in Wilmington, the valuation system, is a reproduction cost less depreciation, and we tie it to, we tie it to the sales that occur. You know, for example, when we did the analysis for fiscal year two thousand and eleven, we were looking at calendar year two thousand and nine sales that occurred in Wilmington. So it's those sales that occurred in calendar year two thousand and nine that get us to the assessment date of one-one-two-ten that brings us to fiscal year two thousand and eleven values, all right? So it's, we're essentially a year behind every time we're analyzing this. So the system that we have in Wilmington, when we value residential property, it's essentially, we're modeling the property as if we're going to build it tomorrow, and then we depreciate it accordingly. We set up those models based upon sales. So it's a per square foot sales approach, style of property, size of the property, what building components there are, that type of thing. So the residential values are almost a hundred percent based upon sales, and that sales model then is created in a reproduction cost system. When we do the commercial, industrial properties, we use a sales approach, and we have to use a market approach. So every year, when we start to develop our file on commercial and industrial properties, we send out questionnaires to property owners, asking them to give us information about their income and their expenses. This allows us to come up with fair and equitable values on their property as well. That income information is then monitored against the sales of properties that occurred in the commercial and industrial sector as well, to determine that we're on the money.
And just to restate what you said in terms that kind of hit home with me, if I understand you correctly, first of all, you're using calendar year two thousand and nine sales data, which is the driving force behind the residential values for this fiscal year.
Exactly.
Because that's, my understanding has always been that's because that's the last complete year's data that you have.
That's right. And the assessment date for this fiscal year is January first, two thousand and ten. So we reflect back one year from that point.
Okay, so that makes sense. And then on the CIP side, in my words, the explanation you gave is that there are, there's more than one way to value the CIP entities and properties. And so you actually use two different valuations, and then you reconcile the two somehow and come up with the value for those, for the CIP sector.
That's right.
Some sort of income-driven appraised value, and then a sales-driven appraised value.
Exactly. We're actually required by law to do that. We have to use two approaches on commercial and industrial property. And the reason that we ask for the income, you know, oftentimes, we see sales of commercial and industrial properties that could be just way off the charts, all right? And the income doesn't support it because it may be that a real estate investment trust has bought up twenty properties, all right? And they've ascribed a number to it. So when we look at the deed, and, you know, we see a sale price of eight million dollars, and we have the property assessed at five million, we know we have a problem there. That's when we call for the income and expense information, and that helps us to determine, you know, is this just a number that was ascribed to this property, or does this sale price on the deed actually reflect the value of that property?
Okay. And I do have a couple others, but I'll hold off and see if they're asked and answered.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question and a comment. Skip, I know right now boards of selectmen, city councils, et cetera, are setting the tax rate. Where do we stand in the Merrimack Valley area relative, say, on the residential tax rate in comparison to other communities like, say, Burlington or Boricca or Tewksbury or, you know, communities in that area? Being said that, you know, the town of Wilmington is a very desirable place to live, we won an award for that, there's a lot of good things happening in the town, but I'd like to know in comparison, residential tax rate with other communities, where do we sit?
You know, we have always had one of the lowest residential tax rates of any community in this area. The only other community that rivals us really is Burlington, and it has to do with the size of the commercial and industrial stock in the two towns. I mean, Wilmington is an industrial powerhouse. We have over thirteen million square feet of industrial floor space. I mean, most people don't realize how much industry there is in this town. And it is because of the industry and the growth we've seen in those sectors, especially in the past couple of years. For example, if we look at the retail sector, the kind of growth that we've seen there, that allows us to bring in a reasonable amount of tax dollars to keep the town afloat and to keep it on an even keel, and at the same time, offer the lowest possible residential rate.
And I know that. Considering on the board a long time, we've always demonstrated to be one of the lowest, if not the lowest, and I think people need to know that. And it's not a bad thing when people realize, say, geez, I didn't realize that there's not a big industrial growth in this community, where there is. And I've lived in this community for over fifty years, realizing that industry does cover a good hunk of the services in this community. But it goes to show you that with residents not realizing that, it shows that there is not a major encroachment of, say, commercial. So the town has done a decent job as far as planning, putting commercial to one area and keeping, not in every case, but keeping residential in another area, so you're not really looking out your back window and seeing this massive building, which I can understand that. I can understand that. So everything's worked together. And I just think the town, I'll make the comment, I think the town manager does a good job putting a straightforward budget. The board has taken an always great conservative approach. We're one of few communities in the Commonwealth that doesn't impose user fees, trash pickup. Children can play sports without paying a fee to play football. So the town does give a lot of services, a good bang for its buck in this community. There's no plowing, it's second to none. I own a business where I see people every day on a given day, and they say it, you know, the town does a good job. And I met a woman not too long ago and said, I want to tell you, it's the board. And it's not like me, 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 and it's not that. She's, I want to tell you, I want to thank the board. The board has done a good job in this community. I like what's happening, and we're giving a lot of services for our taxes. Not everybody may feel that way, but if you take a good look at it, and you look through the glass, and you look in the mirror, town does, offers this community a great service. And it's... Everybody collectively, the manager's office, you setting the tax rate, people are trying to doing a good job planning this community, and the board has taken a conservative approach. And we're one of the few communities that have free cash. And it's... Everything's confident. The board does take a good approach in this, and I just want to demonstrate that. And I'm glad to live here in the town. Thank you.
Ray?
I agree with everything Sluckman McCoy said, but I'd like to add to it. I think yourself, Skip, that the town of Wilmington's got a great, great asset with you doing that job, year in and year out. I think that the community and the taxpayers, believe it or not, I know no one always liked to hear anything going up as far as a tax rate. But I think, again, if they really sit back, as Ms. McCoy stated, everything that Wilmington, you know, gets far as the tax, the taxation, I think, you know, we're going on. Again, to add to it, we're adding to all our departments and equipment, and even public buildings are coming along and right down the line. And again, I think your board and yourself, the board of selectmen, the town manager in that community, oh, you know, good thankful as far as how you run that ship, as far as keeping the money to actually run all this town, has to come somewhere and come in. And you're a great credit, and I know other towns have spoke highly of it.
Thank you.
Everything they said. I do have a couple of questions, if I may. Just to review some of the numbers, you went through it all, and you did a nice job of sort of summarizing. Some of it is above my pay grade, as they say. So if I look at, and you said at the fiscal year 2011, tax levy of $56.5 million.
Yes.
And generally, I think, I don't know what the chart is, but I think you said we have about $3.5 billion in total value in the community, is that right?
That's right.
And so that math would equal somewhere $16.06 per thousand dollars of value if we were not split into different classifications.
That's correct.
So if we were all one class, we'd all pay that.
That's right.
So this is where I get shaky on this math. When we apply the classifications, the residential gets shifted to around $11.88 or $11.88 per 1,000 with the CIP at about $28 and change. What's the... I'm embarrassed to ask it. What's the 1.75? What does that represent? Where is that math being applied in order to get this calculation?
Just to give you a, just a little insight as to how this all came to be, when Prop 2.5 and the full fair cash value movements were grinding through the courts in the '70s, and they started to come into fruition, the towns were being forced into this in the '80s, the early '80s. The legislature, the first thing that came along is all property has to be assessed at 100% market value. Prior to that, properties were assessed at an equalized valuation, okay? So each community's values were there all over the lot. There was one thing that was almost unanimous in every community. Commercial and industrial property was valued much higher than residential property, okay? So when the legislature and the court said to all the communities in Massachusetts, you have to go to a standard, and the standard is fair cash value across the board, the legislature said, that's fine, we'll do that. When they tried to put it into practice, they realized two things were going to happen. Residential taxes were going to skyrocket, and commercial and industrial taxes were going to plummet, okay? Just because there's essentially, there was essentially a, I forget what the term is, but for years, it was done this way, and it was built in. So the legislature came up with a scheme to actually codify two different tax rates. So the legislature said, look, we know we have to value property at 100% market value, but we're going to give communities the opportunity, if they so choose, to tax residential property at one tax rate and commercial and industrial property at another tax rate. And so they came up with, when they initiated these laws, they came up with numbers as to what, how much you could shift. And the maximum, for example, right now, the maximum you can shift is a 1.75 factor. The once point, when you shift to a 1.75 factor, the reciprocal of that through a formula is .740015. Now, I'll just bring you back a few years, too. If we're looking at these shares of the levy in '02, the residential sector was paying 52% levy, 48%. As the residential value started to skyrocket, okay, the legislature realized, we have to do something, we have to actually change this one point. At the time, we were down here, we're at a 1.74 percentage, okay? The legislature said, we've got to do something. We've got to change that law because it doesn't compensate enough. What's happening is that residential taxes are going up much too fast, and commercial and industrial taxes are coming down too quickly. So they passed a provision, and it was like a five-year provision, where you could go to a 2% shift. So they broke the rules and said, you know, if a community wants it, they can go to a 2% shift, then down to 197, 190, 183, and back to 175. We adopted this program, all right? And the reason we adopted it was to mitigate the levy shift between the residential and the commercial and industrial sectors.
Okay, and I appreciate that. So...
And just one thing further. When this law first went into effect, the maximum amount you could shift was a 1.50. So that even has been changed.
Okay. So you're recommending that we would avail ourselves of the maximum that we possibly can shift, in this case, have 1.75. And is the tax levy of $56.5, is that assumed based on, based on 2.5?
Yes.
Over fiscal '10?
Yes.
It is?
It's 2.5 times last year's value, plus new growth, plus a figure for your debt exclusion. Those are the three tenants of Prop 2.5.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That is helpful. Thank you.
Just real quick, Skip, just one... I'm glad you pointed it out, but just want to elaborate a little more. Back in, I believe, if I can see it, from 2004, when we did the 2.00, that was the time I remember, right? I think, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, Governor Romney was governor at the time. We had to wait for special legislation allowing to do that. I also voted for that, allowing maximum shift to commercial. Obviously, being a commercial owner, not happy about it, but I voted that way. You know, so that's just to let folks know that. But that's what we did. So that way, people can see, well, we're going down, but they have to realize we voted the maximum shift allowed, and we're meeting it every single year, still at the maximum. And so people need to realize that. So if they're seeing it while it's going down, you know, what about the residential? Just, and I'm glad you brought that up, but just to elaborate a little more on that. That's all. Thank you.
You've got a good memory. I had forgotten about that. We actually postponed this hearing because we were waiting to get the legislation that would allow Wilmington to do that. That's right.
Experience can make a difference.
Yes, in terms of a look forward, I'm not asking for a look into the crystal ball, but as a look, in looking forward, if you start from the position that driving down the residential share is a good sign, and as a percentage of the overall tax levy driving up, the CIP is a good thing, to get something closer to the '02 and prior years, I remember there were some years that it was actually 50/50.
Yes.
What are the trends that would enable us to see that? I'm trying to put all the math together and say, improving residential values? No. Okay.
What's improving commercial and industrial values? The reason that we got ourselves into this bind is because residential values, excuse me, skyrocketed. Commercial and industrial values remained pretty flat.
Okay.
So the way that we can get back to some equilibrium, you know, where we start moving off this 1.75 shift, is that the commercial and industrial property values have got to start to escalate.
Okay. So to the extent that the economy in general is an indicator that the CIP values are, as they improve, we expect that they would kind of catch up on lost time relative to residential values and stabilize and create more of a 50/50 shift.
Because if you look at what we had done the past two years, where we wrote down all that residential value, I mean, that's, you know, we essentially peeled back all the value on a residential, but we're still waiting for commercial and industrial properties to start increasing in value.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense.
Mr. Chairman, just once again, and just to refer what Sluckman Newhouse was talking about, back in that year of 2004, I mean, I've got a good memory on it because owning a house and a business at that time, and if people want to check the archives, we saved the average resident at that time, I think, close to $600, $800 on just the average household. And if you take a look at that, and if we did impose that, we'd be paying a lot more taxes today than we are. So, but we did put the shift to that, so I just would like people to know that. By taking that action, we've actually saved residents' money over a period of time where it would be a lot more today than it would have been. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Well, when it's time to make a motion, I, for one, need a recommendation as to what the substance of the... I know the substance of the motion is whether or not to adopt the maximum shift, but is there any specific wording that we need for that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend the board adopt a classification shift of 1.75 as recommended by the Board of Assessors, which results in the minimum residential factor of 74.0015 for fiscal year 2011.
I'd make a motion to that effect.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
We have a motion made. A second. Was there any public comments? Anybody want to...
George, living on the Lebon Conquer Street. I actually came in here, I think, last year about this time, maybe a little bit, maybe January last year or earlier this year, on the evaluation of properties. I have a pretty modest three-bedroom ranch, and I seem to recall, I didn't bring it with me tonight, but I seem to recall on my tax bill, there's three elements in the tax bill. There's outbuildings, and there's a property, and there's a land value. And about two years ago, it seems to me, looking at my tax bill, that some kind of magic took place, and the values of the property and the value of the home kind of switched on their heads. And everybody talked in great detail about how great our tax rate was. The average rate was only $50 to $8 or something, the house went up. My property tax went up hundreds of dollars, and it was like over 15% of an increase. And I don't see any explanation there as far as the breakdown of real estate values versus property values. I made no changes to my home, and the value seemed to have, the tax, the value didn't go up, the tax bill went up tremendously. Can we have a little bit of an explanation of a breakdown? How that $1.88 we discussed matches real estate, property versus home value? How was that determined? Is that a clear question?
Yeah, but I think I've got it. When you say property, you're talking about land versus the building?
About two years ago, on my tax bill, as I say, you break down, and I apologize for not bringing it here, I should have brought it, you had thought about it, something happened in my tax bill, and it flipped. Like, there was a value for the home and a value for the land and a minor value for outbuildings. Something happened, and it like transposed, and the value of the residents went way down, went down, and the value of the real estate went way up. And as an overall value of that, my taxes increased something on the order of 15% or greater. And I actually stopped by her office one day, wasn't really satisfied with the answer, and left in kind of a huff. I apologize about that. But it's not clear to me what the value is of the land and the outbuilding, how that's calculated, and how such a drastic change could occur when there was no adjustment to the property. I actually spoke to a lot of other people, and very few people talked about, I mean, I actually did find a few people that mentioned a small increase in the tax, but most of the people that I talked to had a similar problem than I did. So I just, if you could at least give us a small breakdown on the value of the home and the land, why there was some kind of, about two years ago, that number shifted, that they transposed or something, as I seem to recall.
Yeah. What happened in fiscal year 2010, we did a revaluation of all the property in town. And anytime we do that, that can, and most times, does result in changing of the land values. Because what we do is, and maybe I didn't make this clear when I was talking about the buildings, we also have to value, in Massachusetts, you have to value the land separately. Some see it as sort of an archaic way of doing business, all right? And I happen to be one of them. Because if you look at an improved property, if you go to an open house in a neighborhood, you don't say to the realtor, what are they going to sell the land underneath this house for? And what are they going to sell the building for? But in Massachusetts, we're required to come up with a land value and a building value that reflects the property value in total. In '09, and maybe in '08, we were also doing a cyclical reinspection program. And again, this was required by law. We had to knock on everybody's door, get into as many homes as possible. And it's basically, we do it every 10 years. It's essentially a sweep of the town, just to make sure that, you know, if there are any errors or omissions, did we miss something? Do we have, you know, somebody took their garage down, and we still have it on the property record card? Somebody put a garage up, and we don't have it? That type of thing. So, you know, in the '09 and 2010, there were essentially two things happening. We were doing a cyclical reinspection program of the town, and we were also doing a revaluation of the town. So it's quite possible that land value changed, and in fact, in a lot of areas of town, it did change. And it's quite possible that the building values could have changed as well. But I think at the time, I had suggested that you file an appeal, and we would go out and take a look at the property, but...
Yeah, I have to not do that. It just looked like it was kind of rigged against me, so I didn't, I didn't... This year, I'm planning to be a little more prepared, February. You probably will see me in February.
Why did you say "rigged against you"? That was me, I'd say, come on in.
Look at the language and how it says, pretty much, that you're at the mercy of whoever decides, if you look at the language on it.
I think it's cut and dry. Hold on. Thank you.
I just like to follow up.
I hear it, right, Skip?
Yeah.
So basically, what you're saying, which makes sense, is every three years, you reassess each piece of property within the town.
That's right.
And when you do that, it doesn't only control you at the 1.7 or whatever that rate is, it could bring you up to, as you discussed, to whatever the fair market value is at that time in the period of the three years.
That's right.
Which, that's where the offset comes in.
Right. And I think, you know, one of the things that we have been, we've been confronted with, and it really is constant, Wilmington saw a decline in residential values, and we responded to that decline. So over the past, not including this year, but in 2010 and 2009, we essentially reduced residential values by about 6% a year, okay? But that doesn't, when you start throwing these statistics out, that doesn't mean that everybody's house went down 6%. You know, it's still based upon sales. And, you know, an awful lot of people are convinced, and they are convinced of this because of the media coverage, because in a lot of places, the sky was falling, okay? But Wilmington, I think, has weathered that storm pretty well. And I mean, I think the property values are holding up. We go by sales. And unfortunately, when, you know, I don't want to say that this is a no-win position, but when sales were going off the charts, people would get their tax bill and say, these guys think my house worth $350,000. I just had it appraised for $450,000. I just had it appraised for $450,000." They don't know what they're doing, all right? Now, we're kind of in that catch-22. We're saying it's worth 350, and then people are coming in and saying, "Well, the bank says it's only worth 3 and 1/4 now," you know? So, it's constantly, assessed values are an organic indicator of what your value is in the community, all right? And they are, they are constantly subject to change.
And, and not very quickly.
Not very quickly.
You know, assessed values are appraised values based on some fairly old information.
Exactly.
And then market values are, what's it going to be worth next week? Not, was it worth a year and a half ago?
That's right.
So, when the escalator's going up, everybody's happy because they, because tomorrow, they could get far more on the open market than what they're valued at for the purposes of taxes.
That's right.
But when the elevator's gone down or kind of leveling off, looking at old data, saying, "What are you, crazy? I couldn't sell this for, for that amount of money."
Exactly. You know, a fee appraisal on a, on a property is as good as the date that it was prepared, okay? What we do is called mass appraisal, and it's a value snapshot in time, and it too is as good as the date it was prepared. The only thing is, our date is usually a year behind, and that's by statute.
A good part of your assessment is based upon, basically, the sales of, of the classification of, say, three-bedroom houses would be, if it's, if, if the, the market value seems to be, you know, continuous of, of, just like a real estate, when they do analyze the sale of a house, they carve, they, they base it upon seven other houses that are sold in that, that price range.
That's right.
With, with the same, so basically, your, your tax assessment is based upon just like a real estate, so I mean...
Exactly.
It's, so if people today want to take the sale of their house, and that's the price of it, then, you know, that's what, what they're setting the rate for the town, really.
And that's what we encourage people to do. When people come into my office, we've got a book of all the sales that occur, month by month, all right? And, you know, you can just look up there and see what property is selling for in Wilmington. And you can also see what the current assessed value is. I mean, there's, there's no better measure. You just come in and look at that book, and it'll say, "This is one Main Street, this is what it's sold for, this is what it's assessed for." And that's essentially how we do what we do.
Okay. I believe we have a motion made, seconded on the board. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous?
Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Mr. Varner.
Thank you.
Second. Now, I'd like to entertain a motion to take from the table, the agenda item relative to the request of Verizon New England, Inc., and Redding Municipal Light Department to remove one pole and place one pole on Church Street. So, let's take all these, oh, sorry. Yes. Motion made? Second. Just a second. We have a motion to untable the motion, the agenda item from seven?
I've made the motion. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous?
One abstain, one abstention, I'm sorry.
Mr. Gleason?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Joseph Gleason, I'm a right-of-way agent for Verizon New England, Inc., 28, Diana Lane in Drakeett. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board and the town manager for allowing me to appear here a bit late tonight. I had a, another meeting this evening in Linfield, and I, I tried to get Linfield to move their agenda item first, but they were insistent that their meeting was going to terminate by eight o'clock, so they were kind of insistent that I come at seven. So, again, I, I thank you for your, the board's indulgence and for the town manager's indulgence.
I'm sure you may have more important matters to see than this.
Well, I, I, I think the town manager will, will verify that. I did tell the, the town that my first, I feel my first and foremost loyalty is there to Wilmington. The North Shore communities that I'm now appearing in front of is something new. We've consolidated departments at Verizon, so now we're covering about twice the same area, so, but I feel my, my first loyalty is at Merrimack Valley, so.
Good.
I'll be very, very brief. Mr. Chairman, the petition before the board this evening is a request for Verizon to relocate an existing pole. It's pole 703, located on the eastward side of Church Street, adjacent to the premises at One Church Street. The purpose of this relocation is, it was to remove it, excuse me, move the pole approximately 10 feet in a, it's gotta be a northeastward direction along Church Street. There's a new development at Church Street, and the pole is adjacent to the driveway. So, it's been requested that the pole be relocated 10 feet along Church Street, as shown on your plan, to accommodate this new development and the driveway at that location. The location has been staked in the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or a motion from the board? There's no Butters here.
That was my question, was are there, are there any concerns from any of the, any of the Butters in the region? And I suspect there aren't, because we don't see any, right? Okay. So, I would, I would move that we grant the approval of the relocation of this pole 10 feet in the appropriate direction.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
I think you got it right.
Opposed? One abstain.
Thank you. Again, thank you for your patience, Stephen.
Oh, no problem. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to join with Fire Chief Ed Bradbury to announce that the town of Wilmington is among 10 winning communities nationwide in Liberty Mutual's 2010 Be Fire Smart Pledge Program. As you know, during the fall of 2010, Liberty Mutual hosted an online contest, allowing communities across America to compete for a $10,000 fire safety grant. The town of Wilmington has been selected as a contest winner in the medium-sized community category. Two other Massachusetts communities, Whitman and Merrimack, are among the grant recipients. This marks the second grant award that the town has received from Liberty Mutual. In July of this year, Wilmington was among 10 communities nationwide to win a $10,000 Bring Back the Fourth Grant. Wilmington, I'm proud to say, is the only repeat recipient in the country. So, we were one of the first 10, and we're one of the next 10, and no one else did that. So, there are 19 communities that have shared in the, in the 20 awards. Wilmington, $20,000, the rest $10,000. A heartfelt thank you is extended to all of the many Wilmington residents, employees, businesses, organizations, and friends who participated in the online fire safety quiz. Their participation counted in the tally of votes that once again put Wilmington in the winner's circle. A special acknowledgement is extended to retired Wilmington firefighter Jerry Duggan and local residents Stephen and Kristen Griglick, who launched aggressive email campaigns to ensure wide participation among Wilmington residents and friends. Fire Chief Bradbury plans to purchase with the $10,000 a thermal imaging camera with these proceeds to enable the fire department to improve their effectiveness in search and rescue operations. So, that certainly was good news for the town. And I suspect there will be a presentation ceremony at some point. Liberty Mutual will be contacting us about those plans.
Good.
You have a memorandum from me regarding the MSBA Green Repair Program for the Shawshin School Window Replacement Project. Superintendent of Schools Joanne Benton has received notification from the MSBA inviting the town of Wilmington now to participate in their green repair program. The Green Repair Program is a new, one-time-only program for the repair or replacement of roofs, windows, and/or boilers in public school facilities that are otherwise structurally, functionally, and educationally sound. The MSBA states that the main goals of the program are to improve learning environments, reduce energy use, and generate cost savings for school districts. You will recall that at the board's September 13, 2010 meeting, Superintendent Benton was present to discuss the town's interest in applying for funding from this program in conjunction with the town's plan to replace windows, doors, and associated hardware at the Shawshin Elementary School. At that meeting, the Board of Selectmen voted to authorize the superintendent to submit a statement of interest, enabling the town to become eligible for a reimbursement grant estimated to be approximately 45 to 49% of the cost of the project. The invitation from the MSBA to join this program moves the town one step closer to final approval. The window construction project is presently in the design phase. Construction documents are expected to be complete by the end of December, enabling the construction contract to be awarded by the end of January 2011. The town anticipates construction to take place during the summer months of 2011, when school is not in session. The design firm selected by the town is Russo Bar Associates of Burlington, Massachusetts. They bring a wealth of experience and knowledge in this type of construction. Essentially, we, we have been awarded the, the grant. There are some final, there's some final activity that has to go on, but we were among an additional 98 school facilities that the MSBA invited into the green repair program. So, we're pleased certainly about that. It's going to provide, I would estimate, somewhere around $350,000 in savings for a project that we've already appropriated, enabling us obviously to be able to utilize that money, subject to appropriation by town meeting and authorization by town meeting, for a, for a similar project to improve school facilities. So, this is certainly very good news for the town.
So, if I may, Mr. Terry, I think you just said it, but I want to, I want to hear it again, I guess, is, this is sort of pro forma paperwork that has to happen, but we've effectively been told we get the money coming.
Yes.
That's good, right? That's great news? I, I wasn't sure, when I read this initially, I thought, okay, well, this, we're getting closer, but we don't have, you know, we're, we're going to keep on crossing our fingers and hope they, they throw one our way, but...
There is, there is one more step. I mean, I, I note that in an email that they sent out, it says, "Please note that the invitation to the green repair program is not the final approval of a project, and moving forward in the process requires further collaboration between the district and the MSBA," which essentially means we need to continue to work with them, similar to how we're working with them on the high school project. And that as long as we continue to, you know, essentially prove that this is what we're, we're doing, and we're obviously doing it. We're a step ahead of many communities, because we had already appropriated this money for the window project. And so, it, this really does mirror the, the shovel-ready kind of approach to getting project funding. We've already, we've already had the project working, and so, it's, I think it's going to be a pretty easy sell to convince them that here's the, here's the contract with the designer, the windows are being delivered, we're, we're doing this. So, I think it's essentially, I know it's sort of a long-winded answer, but essentially, we, we are expecting that full approval is right around the corner.
Take a 95% yes.
Yes.
Okay. That works for me. Thank you.
Just wanted to bring to the attention a memorandum from Brian Curtin, the chairman of the Middlesex County Retirement System Advisory Council. He writes in accordance with the general laws, "After proper notice of election and distribution of nomination papers, and after investigation, the Middlesex County Retirement Board Advisory Council in its capacity as the election board, has determined that only one candidate, Edgar W. McLean, Jr., has filed nomination papers with the requisite number of signatures. Therefore, pursuant to statute, the election board has declared Mr. McLean as the, elected as a third member of the Middlesex County Retirement Board for a three-year term, commencing January 1, 2011." Mr. Chairman, I'm asking the board to consider ratification of my appointment of, of an appointment of Stephen Lawrenson to the Wilmington Historical Commission. This requires gratification by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Lawrenson would complete the term of Robert Butters, who stepped down from the position.
Move to ratify the appointment of Stephen Lawrenson to the Wilmington Historical Commission.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that completes the regular agenda item before the board.
Thank you. Public comments? The Business Committee reports.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was, just like to make a quick comment. I was wrestling whether or not I wanted to make this comment or not, but on a personal note, I just would like to adjust something. I've had some massive weight loss over the last 15 months, and I've received a lot of good compliments, but in return, I've received a lot of folks saying that I've been sick, approached me, "Are you sick?" And I want, and I appreciate their concern, and I can understand that. And I want folks to know that I'm not sick. And I want folks, and I appreciate that. The reason why is because I have a massive hernia that needs to be addressed, and that brings me why I won't be at the next selectmen's meeting. It's a great meeting, we both follow licenses, and I think it's a great time, and I support all the businesses. And I just wanted to make that clear with folks, and I appreciate the concerns and just put rumors to bed. And I will say that I'm absolutely a candidate for reelection to the board come the next year. And I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. No, other than, it just, very quickly, on the Liberty Mutual honor that we received, I know that the board feels, it's unanimous in the board recognizing the work that our residents have done in order to be successful in getting that honor, and certainly, kudos to the folks, Mr. Duggan and the Griglicks, for their extra work and their initiative. It's very much appreciated, but really is just a reflection of the kind of folks that live in Wilmington and, and who take time to try and get things done and to help out. It's really testimonial to the way that the town works, the people in town work, so.
Agreed.
Thank you.
All set, Mr. Chairman?
You know, thanks, Mr. Newhouse, you kind of stepped on me there a little bit. I, I agree. This, again, was an illustration, that the, the Liberty Mutual thing, of, similar to what happened with the Fourth of July, it just becomes viral when people spread the word, and that this community, the residents in this community, understand the value of these things, and they understand what it can be put to and how it can be put to use in, in the town. So, I, I compliment everybody for participating in that, and that, it's great news, you know, because that's, that's now a new service, a new tool that the fire department has to add to the overall safety and quality of life in the community, and that's a positive. I also wanted to express my appreciation to you and to all the folks that came out on Veterans Day. It was a, a moving presentation. It's always a great honor, for me, not being a veteran of, of any armed services, to be in the presence of true American heroes. And the veterans that were there and those that weren't able to be there owed our gratitude, and so, the way that you assembled as the veterans' agent, that event was complimentary. So, thank you, sir, for doing that, and thanks to the people for coming out, and happy Thanksgiving to all. And Mike, you look fantastic, I want to say.
I won't be the next meeting to say Merry Christmas, but I'm glad you said that. Happy Thanksgiving to the manager, his family, all the memberships, our wonderful reporting secretary that's here at all the meetings, and all the good folks. And one more thing, go Wildcats.
Go Wildcats.
Thank you.
Important dates.
Mr. Chairman, continuing through December 3, is the curbside collection of yard waste. Residents should put the, that yard waste out at curbside on the same day as the regular trash pickup. Brush drop-off next comes on Wednesday, November 24, at the Old Main Street Recycling Center from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. November 25, obviously, town offices are closed, and I join the members of the board in wishing all a happy Thanksgiving. November 27, on Saturday, the brush drop-off continues at the Old Main Street Recycling Center again, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That also takes place on December 1, December 4, December 8, and December 11, at those same times on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Would remind those families interested in their youngsters playing junior basketball, this is first and second grade. The registration deadline for the Recreation Department program is November 29. If you have any concerns, you can go to the website, download the registration form, or you can contact the Recreation Department. the recreation department here at the town hall. Also, on December second, Santa's Workshop will again take place at the town hall from six PM to eight PM. You're welcome to join us here at the town hall with your youngster to meet with Santa. And on December fourth is Breakfast with Santa, which is held at the Knights of Columbus. It also is run by the recreation department. Those tickets go very quickly. They may even be gone. I'm not, I'm not positive, but you, you might want to contact the recreation department right away to see if you can get into one of those two breakfast seatings on December fourth. All are invited to the Christmas tree lighting ceremony at the Town Common on December the fourth. The lights of the, on the trees at the common will be, will be lit. The activities begin at four, and they continue until seven. Santa Claus is expected to arrive at six PM, so say the Fourth of July committee members. And the lights will be magically appearing on the common when Santa Claus arrives on a fire engine at six o'clock.
Santa Claus coming in on our new ladder truck?
I don't think so. Holiday Social by the Friends of the Haunted Tavern will be at the Haunted Tavern and Museum on December fifth, from one to four PM, that's Sunday. And the next Board of Selectmen meeting is December thirteenth, here at the town hall. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of discussing real property issues, not to return to open session?
So moved?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor? Voice count?
Yes.
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 Unanimous? Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.